Thank you for your patience, everybody. It's my pleasure to call to order this regular Tiburon Town Council meeting for Wednesday, May 17. Madam, we have some members of the staff that are operating remotely today. And so if I look in the wrong place, please forgive me. Madam Clark, could you call the roll, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thanks.
Great. Councilmember here.
I am here and I hope Mayor Ryan shared with everybody that my I had to pick up my daughter and they were late in letting them out. So sorry, everybody for having to make you wait.
Thank you. Councilmember Wellner is absent. Vice Mayor Fredericks here and Mayor Ryan.
Thanks, I'm here, obviously. At this point, we would like to open the floor for any members of the public who want to speak about any items that are not on tonight's agenda. So if there are any members of the public in the chambers tonight who want to speak, we'll invite you to come up and state your name. You'll have three minutes. Madam Clark, can you give directions to the members of the public who are online?
Yes, thank you. If you're calling in on Zoom and would like to make a comment during this meeting, please use the raise hand feature of Zoom, which will indicate to me you'd like to make a comment. You can find the raise hand button on your Webinar Controls Bar on the bottom of your Zoom window or smartphone screen. If you're calling and using Zoom, I'll invite you to turn your camera and microphone on to address the council. Please accept the request from the Zoom host that you're being promoted to a panelist. If you're calling and using a phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. And with that, I am seeing one member online. Mr. Mayor, would you like me to recognize her?
Just one second. Let me ask the members in the chambers. Is there anyone in the chambers who'd like to speak on an item that's not on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none. So yeah, please, Madam Clark.
We will recognize Julie Jacobs.
Thank you.
Members of the town council, thank you for taking this comment. I'm calling in to ask that you please adopt the current draft general plan with the inclusion of the Paradise K site for housing and self-certify our housing element to end our vulnerability to the builder's remedy. We were taken by surprise by the action of the Planning Commission last week and ask that you do not allow the certification of the housing element to be thrown off course, causing our vulnerability to the builder's remedy to continue. We're asking also that you please maintain the three-story height cap downtown. And please do not concentrate all affordable housing and most new housing downtown in violation of state law and HCD's direction to the town of Tiburon already to spread housing and especially affordable housing across town. This is a way you can show that you truly care about the safety of current and future downtown residents. Thank you very much for your kind consideration.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Madam Clark, is there anyone else online who'd like to speak?
Seeing none.
Okay, I'll close the general public comment period then, and we'll go on towards to the agenda. We start with the consent calendar. Is there anybody, any members of the public who would wish to comment on any of the consent items? I don't see anyone in the chambers. Anyone online, Madam Clark?
Seeing none.
And then are there any members of the council who would like to pull? I have to pull item CC four and we will continue that. Are there any other items that council members would like to pull?
Yes. I would like to pull items five and item seven.
Items five and item seven. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve items one through three and six? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that passes. And then Councilmember Thea.
Yes, with respect to item five, is this mic working? It doesn't sound like it. But can you hear me, everybody? Okay. With respect to item five, I just had a quick question for you. So I realize that this is a large area, but the cost, the price is pretty high. So I just want to make sure that you're confident that this is the best price the town can get for this work.
Yes, I am, council and council members. We, I did do a lot of research with other municipalities here in the East Bay where Solitude has done work and including David McNabb Environmental. So this is a very good price and it's about forty percent below the engineer's cost estimate, which was very surprising, but the way they keep their costs down is that this company owns all of their equipment and have, they have no subs. Everything's done in-house.
Right. I understand that. And I know it is a large area. I mean, it's probably equivalent to a football field. Is that right?
That is correct.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. That was my only question on that. Item number seven, I just wanted to pull to recognize it. May is Jewish American Heritage Month. I'm very sorry that Councilmember Wellner could not be here tonight. As everyone knows, Councilmember Wellner and I are the two Jewish council members. And this was planned for him to be here. So he could also recognize it. However, I just wanted to pull it to, you know, thank, thank my colleagues in advance and also to honor Jewish American Heritage Month. So that was it.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for staff on items five or questions on item seven? Do we have any members of the public who'd like to comment on either item five or item seven? I have to do that, right? I think. We don't see anybody in the chambers. Madam Clark, is there anybody online who'd like to comment on either of those?
I do have one member online. I will recognize Julie Jacobs.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much for honoring Jewish American Heritage Month. We're grateful that you're doing that. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Yeah. Madam Clark, any other comments? Okay.
Seeing none.
Okay, thank you. Then I'll close public comment period and entertaining a motion for item CC five and seven.
So moved.
All in favor of approving? Aye. Okay, that motion passes three zero. And now we can move on to our action items. Action item one is about Main Street closures. Do we have a staff report or otherwise?
Very briefly, Mr. Mayor and council members, this item relates to a request from the Tiburon Peninsula Chamber of Commerce who have asked that council consider three individual street closures. Main Street lower, lower Main Street closures for 2023. The first would occur on Friday, June 9th from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. The second would occur on Sunday, July 23rd from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And the third would occur on Saturday, December 2nd from noon till 4:00 PM. The fourth request is for council to consider a policy or to adopt a policy or to limit the total number of lower Main Street closures to six annually, reserving three for the chamber to promote local businesses. Deanne Biss, Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce is here, and I know she would like to give a short presentation.
Great, thank you.
Welcome.
Is it working? I'll just move it closer. Not used to this. Thank you for your time this evening. I appreciate it. I sit before you tonight on behalf of the Tiburon Peninsula Chamber of Commerce Board. A board made up of nineteen business owners and community leaders. I am also here to represent, represent a unified downtown business community who are working tirelessly to create a vibrant downtown experience, day in, day out, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. The request, as town staff stated, is straightforward and sensible. First, we'd like to limit the number of Main Street event closures to six per calendar year. We welcome events in our wonderful community. We have event spaces that are specifically created to bring our community together. These spaces should all be explored for events. The second is of the six per calendar year events on Lower Main Street, we would ask that the chamber has three reserved for our use. The concept behind this is the chamber's sole objective is to promote local business. So we can ensure three of those events would be in support of local businesses. The three that we're looking at is a one night only, Friday night on Main, which the community is clearly asking for. The Holiday Festival, and we'd like to recognize all the hard work of our retail establishments and do a Sunday sidewalk sale shopping event. As I've stated on numerous occasions in this setting, two town council event street closures impact our businesses differently. After speaking with our merchants, reviewing our business surveys and recognizing the greater interests of our community, we truly believe this is a balanced approach. None of this information is new. You've seen the letters that were sent in by our local business leaders. We urge you to not defer this decision. We're moving into the busiest time of year for our downtown and we need clear recognition from our town council of our business needs. We appreciate your support and we need your support of local business at this time. And I know that a lot of our local businesses wrote in. I just want to emphasize again. Members from AC Ventures, who's our largest lower Main Street property owner, support our plan, Sam's Anchor Cafe, Main Street Mercantile, Autonomy Art, Tiburon Wine, Keith Bartel, Squallo Vino, Cafe Accree, Servino Restaurante, Waters Edge Hotel, Yamas Retail, Zalinski Properties Caviar Company, plus the entire board of the Chamber of Commerce. So again, we're sensitive to our community needs. We just would like to be heard and we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you very much. Any members of the council have any questions for either staff or for the chamber?
I have one. How did you get a unanimous decision, Deanne?
Because it's reasonable. I appreciate the question, though.
Yeah, well, good job.
Any other questions? At this point, I'd like to open it up for public comment. Or is there anyone in the chambers who would like to speak on this agenda item? Seeing none, Madam Clark, is there anyone online who'd like to speak to this agenda item?
I do have two members of the public. If you're ready to recognize them, I
Thank you.
We will start with Justin Flick.
Thank you.
Hello, council. How are you?
Hey, welcome. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. I just want to be clear that, yes, we supported. I think fix is reasonable. I wrote in today. I'm not sure if you all were able to read the email that I wrote. You know, we want to, we want to be supportive of the events that happen in the town. However, I, we, we still feel the same way about the music in front of the hotel. You know, I'm, I'm not, you know, in support of having music in front of the hotel. And I'm hoping that it can be located elsewhere. But, you know, we want to we, you know, I think six events is reasonable, and I'm hoping that we can do that with music elsewhere. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next, next is Karen Beal.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Welcome, welcome and thanks for joining us.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor Ryan and Vice Mayor Fredericks and, and Town Councilmember Thea. Thank you. I just wanted to endorse what Deanne has said and say that a lot of work has gone on to unify the businesses in the town after a couple of years where there wasn't so much unification. And as such, I think that the chamber coming together and agreeing a reasonable number as a maximum that would actually work for everybody, albeit they still impact some of our businesses. We are willing to, as an, as a collective, you know, make some concessions to ensure that we give both the community and the businesses an opportunity to share in a maximum of six events. So I think it's a very well thought out plan. And I would totally and utterly endorse what Deanne says and also encourage you to actually, you know, put this to bed tonight and make a decision so that we don't have to keep coming back to the town council about, you know, how this impacts our town.
Thank you. Appreciate the comment.
Thank you.
Madam Clark, is there anybody else online who'd like to speak?
Seeing no additional comments.
Okay, thank you. I'll close the public comment then and bring it back to the council for discussion. And by the way, I'll just start with one quick comment, and that is that Councilmember Wellner is not here. He did ask that we consider acting on the policy when he's here and able to contribute. And I know that that vexes some people and I'm not saying that will happen, but he did ask. And given that we only have four council members and he's therefore twenty-five percent of it, that might factor in. Anyway. Are there other council members who want to start the discussion? Vice Mayor Fredericks, please. Okay, and I agree that we have been contemplating this for a long time. Councilmember Thea, do you have comments or discussion, questions?
I'll let Alice go first.
So, I mean, I'm happy to say, I certainly think, first of all, I appreciate the chamber coming here with such a balanced proposal. I really appreciate them coming here with a plan for a request for closures for three events in advance, so we can get them on the calendar. I, I really appreciate that. That helps frame the whole year and like the magnitude and the scope and the context and a lot of things. So I really appreciate that. And, and I definitely appreciate that it's a balance between the business and the community because the community loves, loves closing Main Street. So I definitely appreciate that. I, and I will say, I was a little surprised by some of the public comment we got in writing that there was an inference that by restricting the number of closures to six, that we were just, we were also therefore limiting the number of events. And I think that was a false equivalence. Because there are other places to have events. And I've said this to the Little League and I've said this to the school and I've said, I will say this to everybody. We, it's time to start considering other event spaces. And it's not a, it's a recognition that it impacts the businesses. It's not a, we don't like events thing. There's nothing wrong with events. It's just the question of where they are and who they impact. But, but again, I really appreciate the, the three events that you brought to us tonight, Deanne. It's, they're, they're different enough, they're each different enough that they sort of touch and, and attract different parts of the community, which I think is really important. It's like, it's, it's a nice representation of how we can use the space and, and show it off. So I, you know, kudos to the board and to your, to your leadership for getting the chamber to recognize that this was a fantastic balanced proposal. Yeah, please.
All right. I agree with the mayor. I would also like to add the comments that there are other groups out there that would like to close downtown Main Street for events. Each of them has a hope that everybody will turn out for their particular event and it will be a benefit to downtown. But we've heard from our merchants that it isn't necessarily a benefit to downtown and that is our downtown. That is its prime purpose. As the mayor pointed out, there are other venues where events can be held and perhaps there can be a little more information for the public, what those other venues are. They include Belvedere Park. Sometimes Blackies is an appropriate place for it. And the Library Plaza, which is just opened up to public use, will be a wonderful use for everybody. Saying that, I would like to support the chamber's request, both the number and the pattern of closures.
Thank you. Councilmember Thea?
Yes, so I wanted to start out by thanking the chamber and thanking Deanne. I think it has taken a lot of work to get to a unanimous decision and I wasn't trying to make light of that. I was actually wondering how it was possible. So I want to thank you for that. I also want to recognize the fact that this has been, I want to say a two-year effort in coming to a decision that everybody agrees with. And I think that's what is most important. I also wanted to thank you for bringing back at least one Friday nights on Main. That is one of the things that I've, I've voiced that I hear the most complaints about. Why don't we have Friday nights on Main? What happened? And, you know, I want to thank the chamber for bringing that back. And if you bring back the Labor Day Parade, I would actually love you forever. Because that's the other comment I get. Why, why don't we have the Labor Day Parade anymore?
That technically isn't closing the street either, by the way, because the parade goes right down the street.
Yeah, it's not closing the street. So I do, I do think this is a balanced policy. I would like to ask a question of staff, though, because have we approved the closure for Juneteenth?
Yes, you have.
We've already approved that closure?
You did that at the prior council meeting.
I just wanted to make sure that wasn't left out somehow. And then I also wanted to acknowledge that you know, there, there was a lot of discussion about criteria also for closing down the street. And I, that is more of a council decision. But I do think that is something important. And I guess if you know, I, I think, did, did Councilmember Wellner want, want us to wait on the whole item? Or did he have, no, did he have?
He didn't.
What did he ask us to do?
Hold, please.
Okay.
While we're waiting, can I just make?
Yes, yes, I'm in term.
And just in response to that, I, I do agree if there is a lot of conflict about who gets to close the street, we will need in the future to think about what the criteria are.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think we've had that many applications, so I'm not that worried. I don't think we've had even ten. But I, but yeah, I think we've probably had about six or seven at the moment. So I think, yeah.
Yeah. So he said, can the council vote on three specific closure requests on May 17th, but postpone the discussion about the overall number of closures to a later council meeting? So. You know. I, I would just say, I, you know, I sort of am fairly well cemented in support of this proposal. And the idea that future discussion could change my mind is pretty remote. So I, you know, if you two feel strongly about the motion or about the approving the policy, I think with all due respect to Councilmember Wellner, I, we could, we could do it. I would entertain, or entertain the motion for that, but.
I would like to move that we approve the number and pattern of closures of Main Street as offered by the chamber.
Do you need any more specific language than that, by the way?
Second.
Yeah, I just want to be clear. So your, the motion is to approve the three individual closures on June 9th, July 23rd and December 2nd and to essentially direct staff, I suppose, to, to limit the number of closures to six in a year, reserving three of those closures for chamber events.
Including the three that basically you just listed.
And then, and then we will have to become, we'll have to discuss in the future if we're going to make a policy be a policy that, that gives us criteria with which we evaluate the
And it may be a flip of a coin.
Okay, understood. Thank you. And, and is that the motion that you're seconding?
Yes, I'm seconding the motion.
Great, thank you. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, John.
Yeah, apology. So the motion passes three zero. Congratulations.
Yes. And thank you for your work, Deanne.
So much.
So we'll move on to the second action item, which is, has to do with hybrid meetings. Is there a staff report for this?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight, we are looking for feedback from the council as to which additional town bodies to begin offering hybrid meetings. The council began offering hybrid meetings for the town council meetings, beginning on March 1st of this year. And Planning Commission, Design Review Board, and the Post Commission are on track to begin operating hybrid meetings on June 1st, just in a couple of weeks. And we're looking for some direction from the council tonight as to whether or not you would like to add additional bodies to that or start offering Zoom hybrid meetings for the rest of the town boards, too. The remaining bodies of the town are the Disaster Council, the Diversity Inclusion Task Force, the Heritage and Arts Commission, the Public Art Selection Panel, and the Traffic Relief JPA, AKA Yellow Bus. Any that you decide that will not offer hybrid meetings, they will still be video streamed live through the town's website. They just won't offer live virtual participation. That is all I have for you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks. So I know that we host the Yellow Bus JPA meeting here. Am I asking if Belvedere would pay for some of it or am I? Or? Yeah. Only, and by the way, I only ask because I could see then that any, anything that holds its meeting here like could then, you know, sort of want to fall into that bucket.
Sure. And I think the Richardson Bay Regional Authority, it falls into, you know, a good example of if, and I have not spoken with the board of the Traffic Relief JPA on this item, if the board is, is interested in hybrid meetings, it's certainly an expense that the JPA should cover, just like the Richardson Bay Regional Authority covers their cost of, of that as well. So we haven't spoken about that. I think it'd be perfectly fine for council to not include the JPA at this point until we have another JPA board meeting and we can discuss it with that board at that time. That makes sense.
Yeah, great. Thanks for that clarification. Yes, Vice Mayor Fredericks.
Yes, and my question, I, it has to do with staff and the burden to our staff. I think, I think it's amazing how inexpensive it is to have the video staff on board for these meetings and well worth it. But is it an any extra burden to our staff to staff these meetings when they're hybrid?
I think it's a, it's a little difficult to, to, and Lee certainly jump in if I get this wrong. I mean, the just because it's a hybrid meeting doesn't necessarily mean we need to have somebody in the tech closet doing that. You know, staff has the ability from this table to do some modest camera switching. But that generally would require probably to have two staff members at the table to both run the meeting and run the cameras. Lee, is that, do I have that right, you think?
Yeah, that, that's, I think, accurate. It, it, hybrid meetings are a little bit more technical. They definitely require probably at least one staff member there to be sort of tech savvy enough to troubleshoot any issues. But I think Greg has it right, that most meetings generally will require probably two staff members to be able to make everything run functionally. But as he said, we can do it from the table. We don't necessarily need a kid to hire a camera operator like we do for council.
Great, thank you.
I'm not sure that answers your question.
No, it does. And, and I wasn't concerned because I thought it wasn't worth it. I just wanted it out on the table, what it costs us overall to do this.
Do you have any questions, Councilmember Thea?
I just had a comment when the time is appropriate.
Okay, so before we get to discussion, I'd like to open it up to members of the public. Is there anyone in the chambers who would like to make a comment on? Okay, so before we get to discussion, I'd like to open it up to members of the public. Is there anyone in the chambers who would like to make a comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, do we have anybody online who'd like to speak?
Being none.
Great, thanks. So I'll close the public comment period and bring it back to the council for discussion. Go ahead, Councilmember Fier, do you want to discuss?
Great, sure. I'm very, very excited about this item. I think this is a key issue of transparency and public access. And I, when we were on Zoom, there were a lot of people that could attend by Zoom but could not come in person. In addition, you know, with, with the, with the pandemic kind of over, but COVID still out there. You know, we, we have people that, that attend who are sick, that can attend online but cannot attend in person. So I'm very excited by this. I, this came up because, you know, specifically, we wanted the Diversity Inclusion Task Force to be online. But then I really wanted to add on all of our bodies because I think it's critical that the public be able to participate virtually as well as, you know, have the, the record of the meeting that people can actually watch. So at the appropriate time, I would love to make a motion.
Your microphone, Councilmember, or excuse me, Vice Mayor.
So actually, what, aren't the recordings, at least the audio recordings of most of these committees online already? No?
The, yes, the audio and video at this point, is that correctly?
Yes, all video and it's all video now. Because even the meetings that we don't livestream or we don't Zoom, we are still video recording, so.
So the advantage of this is just a hybrid meeting that invites more people to participate.
Correct, it would allow members of the public, as this evening, to participate via Zoom, essentially.
Any other comments? And then, so, so how often does the Disaster Advisory Council meet? Does it say in here?
About once every two or three months.
Oh, it is, okay.
Right.
Interesting. And that is a, is that a JPA, or is that, like, where does that have?
I, I don't think it's officially a JPA. It's a, you know, it's a collaborative effort between Belvedere and Tiburon. But I don't believe it's officially a JPA.
Not a JPA, it's Lori Nielsen.
Oh, right, right.
Yeah, that really runs it. She actually announced that we were already hybrid at our last meeting yesterday, so I, I didn't correct her, but.
So if you'd like to make a motion, what would the, what would the motion be?
Well, I'd like to move, I mean, if, if you're not comfortable, if you want to wait for the JPA, the Tiburon Traffic Relief JPA, but my motion would be that we make the Belvedere Tiburon Disaster Advisory Council, Diversity Inclusion Task Force, Heritage and Arts Commission, Public Art and Selection Panel, and implement hybrid meetings for those. I would include the Tiburon Peninsula Traffic Relief JPA as well.
You can just say pending their approval, right?
Pending, pending approval for cost sharing. And that's the motion.
I'll second that.
Great, thanks. And then all in favor of approving the motion? Say aye, aye. That passes three zero. Thank you. Great. And thank you, by the way, to staff, because part of the reason we didn't include everything right away was we just weren't necessarily sure how it would work. And in practice, it has worked very well, and that is like some large part to the staff, so proof of concept has gone very well. So I really appreciate that from all of you. Now we move on to the public hearing section of the meeting, and the first public hearing is the Precise Plan Amendment for one sixty-five Avenue Mayor Flores. Do we have a staff report?
We do. I'm going to be remote today. So I, I did prepare a, here we go. Thank you so much. I'm getting assistance from all places. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmember Thayer. What we have before you tonight is, thank you, a precise plan amendment to the Miraflores Precise Development Plan. And the property that we're going to be speaking about is one sixty-five Avenue Miraflores, and also referred to as Lot Six. It'll help you when you're looking at the presentation from both myself and probably the architect tonight. Next slide, please. So what is before you tonight is an amendment to the Miraflores Precise Development Plan to create a new secondary building envelope for Lot Six. And just for you in the public, in some of these precise plans or precise development plans, they're what we call a primary building envelope, which is generally where the house is, and then a secondary building envelope, where you can have accessory structures, landscape, features, et cetera. In this case, there was no secondary envelope created for this lot, and that is not unlike some other precise plans. However, there have been other lots within this precise development that have secondary envelopes or have been approved for secondary envelopes. And the reason why we need to create this secondary building envelope is to legalize the location of an as-built accessory structure and also allow for potential development of other accessory buildings and landscape improvements. Next slide, please. So I also think since some discussion will be brought up as to how all of this has occurred, it's important to look at the chronology. And this single-family residence was constructed in nineteen seventy-seven. And somewhere, we don't know the exact date, but we do know that in two thousand and seven, there was an open-air pergola that was approved as a landscape feature. And then on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, we were made aware of the pergola, that the pergola was converted to an accessory building without a permit. The new property owners came and enclosed the, the pergola without knowledge that they needed a building permit. They were given a citation or a notice to, to remedy. And they did come in and apply for a site plan and an architectural review. This was required to be withdrawn because they didn't have a secondary building envelope. And so this got a little bit more complicated, and the applicant needed to then come in and apply for a Precise Development Plan Amendment. And they did that in October. There was a lot of back and forth and understanding about the project as well as I believe, and I think the applicant can talk about this further, or the architect, there was, there was a change in architects as well. And so we had to go through this process to create the building envelope. After many revisions and discussions, on March eighth, the Planning Commission reviewed and considered the PDPA and asked them to come back with some more information. So on April twenty-sixth, the Planning Commission heard that, held a public hearing again and recommended to Town Council the approval of the PDPA application with conditions. Next slide, please. So just so you can get a little picture of what we're talking about, the green that you're seeing on your screen is the primary building envelope, and, and the blue is a secondary building envelope with the landscape features and gazebo accessory structure that now is enclosed as an accessory structure. Next slide. So when we went to Planning Commission, there was a great discussion about the size of this and where this should be located, et cetera. And so what we finally ended up looking at was that how could we condition this particular structure so that there would be some assurances to a size, an appropriate sizing for the structure? So the Planning Commission approved the project with these proposed conditions about landscape improvements were permitted, including but not limited to swimming pools, spas, decks, patios, stairwells, landings, and improvements that are less than the three feet in height. And land, landscape features that are detached, not completely covered, and unenclosed structural features, not limited to an arbor, trellis, pergola, and water features, and that such features not exceed twelve feet in height, and they can be located at least three feet from the fence. There shall be one accessory building with a maximum height of fifteen feet and a maximum size of two hundred and fifteen square feet. And one might ask why such an odd number. That is an odd number because the actual building is two hundred and fourteen square feet. So we figured based on, you know, there could be some calculations and wheel room, so the Planning Commission gave him another foot, square foot. And that all fencing and retaining walls are permitted within that secondary building with a maximum height of six feet. So, and just to note, this doesn't change any other provisions of the precise plan. It just adds a secondary building envelope. Next slide, please. So staff recommends that we hold a public hearing on this item as we're doing tonight. If the Town Council concludes that this proposed secondary building envelope would be consistent with the intent of the Miraflores Precise Plan, the Town Council should adopt the draft resolution, Exhibit One, reaffirming that the project is exempt from CEQA and conditionally approve the amendment of the Miraflores Precise Plan for Lot Six of the Miraflores subdivision. Or if the Town Council concludes that the proposed secondary building envelope is inconsistent with the intent of the Mayor, Miraflores Precise Plan, the Town Council may direct staff to prepare an appropriate resolution for review and adoption at the next meeting. Next slide. And of course, I'm available for any questions and clarifications. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go on to the presentation from the architect, do we have any questions for staff? Yeah, Vice Mayor Fredericks, please.
Sure. Yeah, I do have a question. Thank you, Dina. So this, this is a large lot. Does the precise plan overrule SB nine's conditions that allow lots to split and, and build actually larger structures than is described in the amendment to the precise plan?
The, and, and I'm sure Ben will pop up if I'm not right, but SB nine and ADU, all of those new legislations that help us support housing opportunities throughout town would not apply to the precise plan. In other words, if they met the setbacks and the square footage and lot sizes for the SB nine lot split or to create ADUs, they could do so on this lot outside of the secondary building envelope.
E- even if it conflicted with the conditions of the precise plan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fier, please.
Yes, I had a question. So there's a number of photographs in the packet. I think it's Exhibit Six. It might be pages one through thirteen. Do we know who took, who, who submitted those photographs?
Let me look.
Okay, thank you.
Can you, I don't actually have the exhibits with me. I'm embarrassed.
Okay, it, it's okay. I'll figure it out.
Are they of, I believe it might have been the next door neighbor, but I'm not sure. Can you show, show them up at the camera, maybe, and I can see them? Just show them up and.
There's like, there's about thirteen of them. It's Exhibit B, but I'll figure out who submitted them. Yes.
I believe that that is from the next door neighbor to show you what is visible from her site.
Okay, and about how far is this from the property line?
We, we believe it's, well, we believe it's eighty feet away from the property line.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. So at this point, I'd invite the architect to make a presentation. Is that what you'd like to do? Please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name's Michael Heckman. I'm an architect here in town, and I'm working with the Shamir family. Sharon Shamir is here to follow the proceedings. She might have a comment or two. About the photos, I can clarify that every photo that we submitted had a label. And there may have been one or two that did not have a date, but it's part of our seventeen slide presentation that you're going to see tonight.
Thank you.
So I'll just briefly go through some of our analysis of the lot and how it sits relative to other lots. There's a pointer that I think I could use, right? With a fresh battery. Okay, star button. Right. Okay, so this is the main elements of the subdivision area. We took these three lots as a means of comparison to get some sense about what the size and, and envelopes were and how they compared to each other. This is a smaller part of this subdivision, but it's a much denser area. Lots are smaller. So we didn't include that in our analysis. You can see that the lot, number six, which is what we're discussing at one sixty-five, is one of the bigger lots in this grouping. I need another slide. Can I do that here? Oh, here we go. So this is a follow-up slide, which shows a little more detail of the subdivision with the meets and bounds and boundaries clearly noted, and you can see if it was better focus where the envelopes are. I think they will, well, they show up very clearly on the monitor here. But property six in the middle is one of the bigger of the properties. So if I could have the next slide. So on this slide, we give you a much clearer and bigger scale comparison of these various properties. You can still see here that we do have a, a large lot number six that we're discussing. And we believe that even with the new secondary envelope, it's still in a proportion to its significant size that's, is appropriate for this subdivision. Next slide. So this is a graph giving you a little more detail. You've got the three lots across the top. This is Lot Six, which is what we're discussing. The main envelope area is pretty sizable, and that envelope is twenty percent basically of the entire lot. So next slide. Here, we've included the secondary envelope that we've proposed. And with, this is the area of that secondary envelope. We'll show you a little bit more of the comparison numerically in another slide. But the gazebo is positioned almost centered here from north to south. And there has been a number that's shown up in the staff report that said the structure was eighty feet from the neighbor. So that distance there to there. The fact is that the envelope is eighty feet from the neighbor. The gazebo is actually over a hundred feet from the neighbor. So from that point to the neighbor at one sixty-three is over a hundred feet. So next slide. So this is more analysis of the different areas. This is our new building envelope. These are the various envelopes by comparison. And I think even at a thirty-one percent buildable area with a lot of restrictions, clearly, we're still in the range of what's appropriate for this subdivision. The next slide. These are some photos that we've taken, and they're all in groupings of two. Clearly, this was not taken in May of twenty twenty-two. That's actually a photo from May of this year. So the photos actually go chronologically sort of in reverse order. So as we go back into the slide grouping, there's another slide from this same date in, actually, March of nineteen twenty-three. Which is the next slide. And the idea is to show you the vegetation between the two properties. Yeah, both of those slides show that there's a fair amount of vegetation that gives good screening, visual separation, good privacy. The conversion of the structure was really just a response to wanting to have someplace that they might utilize better. And this hillside is really exposed to a lot of wind. And certainly the winter months, and particularly this winter, has been pretty grueling to consider for any. has been pretty grueling to consider for any kind of outdoor use. So the owners felt like it was a simple matter for them to put some weather protection in. And that's exactly what they did. So there's two more slides. This should be the third slide, right? Number one. This is actually April twenty-fourth is when this slide was taken. And there's another, so there's, these are from different positions on the property.
Excuse me, can you entertain a question? Go ahead.
You need to stop the timer.
Can you clarify what we're looking at? Is this the main structure with the flat roof and the?
This is a photo from one sixty-five looking west toward one sixty-three.
Thank you.
So one thing we wanted to represent is that the residents of one sixty-five, the Shamir family has a view toward this residence and always has had. So there's not an issue about privacy that's any different than what it is between the two residences, even with the inclusion of the gazebo, which is a structure which is downhill and a little bit closer.
And, and so the viewpoint is not from the gazebo, it's from
From the residence.
From the residence.
The balcony.
Of one sixty-five.
Gazebo is hiding down in here somewhere behind this tree.
Thank you.
So we could go to the next slide. So this is a shot from the gazebo. And it's actually on the yeah, it's looking back toward one sixty-three. And that's actually in March of this year. You can see that the, this is sort of the end of the winter season. So a lot of the trees on the property at one sixty-three are barren, but when they fill out, which you will see in the next two slides, the separation visually is pretty solid. Let's go to the next slide. So this is a view from inside the gazebo on the south side and looking down toward one sixty-three. It's, it's only from one part of the gazebo, but I think it demonstrates that the separation visually is pretty intense. And then we have one more slide that is from this same date in May. You can see the next slide. Yes, it's from the same date in May, but this slide is shot from the north side of the gazebo, but still looking back toward one sixty-three. So I think it gives you a sense of what our proposal is. I did go to visit the neighbor, Ms. Hariri, at one sixty-three and was able to see what her concerns were, which are mainly from her bedrooms, which are facing northerly for the most part. The main views for that property at one sixty-three are towards San Francisco, so are really out of consideration, I guess, for what we're trying to accomplish. But we feel like our proposal is, is an appropriate one. It's secondary envelope is small enough and doesn't create an enormous amount of buildable area. And the restrictions that the staff had imposed on this secondary envelope are certainly going to minimize any change in the future. It really just allows the gazebo to remain intact and minor landscape improvements to be created in the future. So that's all I have for presentation this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any members of the council have questions, Mr. Heckman?
I just have one question. What did the, did the neighbor want when you visited? Did they have any requests?
I think you may hear from her this evening. So why don't I not try to interpret what her thoughts were?
That, that's, that's fair enough, fair enough. And then my other question is, is so the, the gazebo now does have the walls and the windows?
It does, correct.
Okay. And you're, you said that that was approximately one hundred feet from the property line?
No, no, from her building, from the residence itself.
Okay, from the residence. Okay, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's a significant distance from the property line. I would just venture to say it's over forty feet, maybe fifty.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I should clarify too, that I think one of the disturbing parts of the gazebo and how it was sort of formalized was it has white frames and old, you know, brand new plywood. It's all going to be modified so it looks exactly like the residence and finish. So it'll blend in is the main idea. It looked like it's part of the main house and development. And we will go to the DRB if we get your support tonight and fine tune all those last elements.
Thanks, yeah, Vice Mayor Fredericks, please.
And I believe I read in the staff report, but perhaps you'd like to confirm that at this time, the intended use is not as, as a dwelling.
No, it wouldn't be living space or have any kind of purpose as a living area.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff or Mr. Heckman? Okay, so at this point, I'd like to open it up for public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. So is there any members of the public would like to come speak? So if you could please come to the podium and state your name and then you'll have three minutes. Thanks.
Thank you. My name is Viruzi Hariri. I am the owner of the one sixty-three Avenue of Miraflores. Sorry, I have issues with my throat. I'm sure you have seen, or I hope you have seen all my letters opposing this project that they're having. Mainly because of that building that they have built illegally enclosing their gazebo area, which was an open space and it's been there since two thousand and seven. And we had no issues with it at all. However, not there is a living space. I don't know what they call living space. If it, this is not a living space. It has windows, it has sliding doors, and it's totally enclosed. And it is a building. It's a big structure right in front of our eyes. I've been there, I've been living there for forty, over forty-five years. And they just purchased their house a couple of years ago. And now they want to do all these developments, which is perfectly fine with me as long as it's not intruding into our privacy. And not such a huge building right in front of our eyes. They are saying that it is eighty feet or a hundred feet away, but as you could see on the pictures that they are eighty feet or a hundred feet. It's very close to our living area, to our mainly bedrooms. They could see right into our bedroom perfectly. And I don't know if they are relying on my fruit trees to blossom more or to have more leaves to cover their, you know, to block our privacy or whatever. But this is not acceptable. And if they want to have a secondary building envelope, it's perfectly fine with me as long as they cannot build right by my house. And it's okay to have a gazebo. It's okay to have a landscaping or whatever else they like to have as an outdoor space, but not as a building. If it is a building, I will be opposing it totally. Would you please show the other pictures too, from the other? Oh, thank you. This is from another view. These images, they are true images. They have not been edited. They have not been zoomed. It's exactly how you see it. And you could tell exactly what, how close their building is or that structure is by my bedroom. Would you, oh, thank you so much. Oh, you're not. Okay. Oh, she's doing it. Sorry remotely. Okay, that's wonderful. Thank you. And look how close this is. I mean, you could, they could, once you're my, I of course have asked the other board members to come in and they did come and they were surprised that how close this building is to my bedrooms. And of course, my neighbor's solution was get a curtain or cover your windows so we can see inside your window. I don't think it's fair. But thank you for your time, though.
Thank you for the comment. I appreciate it.
Any questions?
I actually have a question.
Please.
Alice, your night, mic isn't on.
Vice Mayor Fredericks, your mic. Yep, thank you.
I have a question for either of the parties, if they can answer it. How many feet is the, the structure in question set back from the lot line? More or less? I mean, is it four? Is it twenty?
I think it's a lot less than twenty. Maybe ten. But I'm sure he could tell you. Thank you.
Did I answer? I can venture a calculated guess. I do know that the envelope is about twenty feet away. We've mentioned it to be nineteen and change, so.
Oh, that's good enough.
Gazebo is that distance again. So I'm guessing it's close to forty feet from the property line.
Okay, so the gazebo is fully within the proposed secondary building envelope?
Absolutely.
And, and you're saying that it's twenty? Okay, got it.
Yeah, we're twenty feet from the envelope and forty feet from the gazebo to the property lot.
Understood, thanks.
Yeah. And Mrs. Shamir would like to make a comment.
Okay, yeah, that's, I'm going to say, ask for further public comment next. Yes, that'd be great. Thanks. So, yeah, so say it formally, are there any other members of the public who are in the chambers who would like to speak on this item? Please, first the podium and state your name and then you'll have three minutes to speak.
Okay. Hi, my name is Sharon. I'm the owner of one sixty-five Avenue of Miraflores. I want to answer to what my neighbor said about her ability to see our unit from her bedrooms. If, I don't know if I can see that the pictures that she showed, but you can see clearly even our house from her bedroom. And it looks pretty close to me too, when I look from her house. But this is it. This is the house and we cannot move it. So if you see again at the pictures, you'll see that they look closer, even our house look closer from her bedroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chamber looking to make a comment on this? And so I seen none. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone online who'd like to speak to this item?
Being done.
Okay, thanks. So I'll close the public comment period now and bring it back to the council for discussion. Who'd like to start us off this evening?
I, I'll start. You know, I know, I know how it feels intrusive. But, but the actuality of it is, as you heard me ask, the planning director, under the current housing laws, under a particular housing law, your neighbor actually has the right to build a dwelling unit four feet back from the property line. So compared to that, this is intrusive to you, given what you're used to, but, but it's really minimal. I am in favor of supporting the findings and the resolution of the planning commission and amending the precise plan.
Thanks, that's very well said. And I, I tend to agree. And I would, I would say that I appreciate the planning commission's thoroughness in their, in their meeting that I watched. And considering all of the, but I thought it was good perspective that Vice Mayor Fredericks gave as well. Councilmember Thier, do you have any comments or?
I do, I do. So I, I do want to acknowledge that this is a very difficult case when something is built without permits. And then someone comes to try to legalize it. And I will say that I am very opposed to people building without permits here in Tiburon. And so I do want to acknowledge our other neighbor and say that, you know, I, I understand how having something enclosed when it was a gazebo can be very frustrating. I do believe there is a process through design review. Am I correct with that, Dina?
Yes, this, this project is solely to determine the secondary building envelope. I think that the architect said it too. Once this is, or if this is approved, they will have to come back to design review. And at that time, we'll talk about materials of construction, any type of landscaping or privacy that needs to occur. So yes, there is, there is another process.
Okay, so I, I just, I just wanted to put that comment out there because, you know, we, we encourage our residents to get building permits and to go through the process and follow all the rules. And, and I'm not saying that, 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 that you, that this neighbor did not follow the rules. Perhaps they weren't aware and, and thought that they could just, you know, put up a few walls and windows and just make it so that it wasn't raining on them in the pergola. So I'm not trying to cast any fault or any, anything like that. But I am seeing, I, I understand your frustration. You know, I, I do understand my colleagues' comments because right now, you know, they are correct. You know, an entire ADU can be built within about four, four feet of your, of your home. So I would really encourage that through the design review process that, you know, you do come together and try to find ways for more privacy. You know, we, it looks like from the photos and from what I've seen, it is a, a home that is upslope and a home downslope. So that's always going to be a little challenging because the upslope home can always see in the downslope home. It looks like the downslope home can also see upslope. But with respect to this enclosed pergola structure, you know, there will be an opportunity to work through and with design review board. I think that the, the property does need a secondary building envelope. And so I would support that today.
Thank you. And, and I gotta say that that is a fantastic comment. And I should have mentioned that, that on the street, you can definitely avail yourself. I mean, that is the purview of the DRB in terms of establishing and maintaining privacy. So you will have another opportunity to avail yourself of the hearing that, that board to make sure that that happens. So so, so please take solace in that. But do I have a motion to uphold the recommendation of the planning commission in this case to approve the precise development plan amendment? And do I have a second? Councilmember Thier? I'll, I'll second it. All in favor of approving the amendment? Say aye. Oh wait, do we need to do a roll call vote? Or is this something else?
No.
No, no. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, so the motion passes three zero. And at this point, we'll move on to public hearing number two, which is a municipal code. Yeah, thank you. Amendment for ADUs. Do we have a staff report on this item? Community Development Director Tassini will be giving the report.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. We've been here before on these items, so I hope to provide something somewhat brief for and then be available for questions. But what's before you tonight is a public hearing to consider a recommendation from the planning commission to amend subsection sixteen dash fifty-two point one hundred of section sixteen dash fifty-two of chapter sixteen of title. Four of them, Tiburon Municipal Code, repealing subsection. And then you're going to introduction of an ordinance and first reading sixteen fifty- Repealing subsection, and then you're going to introduction of an ordinance and first reading sixteen fifty-two point one oh five of chapter sixteen. Of title four of the Tiburon Municipal Code regarding accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. Next slide, please. So as I said, we we have discussed this many times before, but most recently is in February of twenty-two twenty-two. The council adopted an ordinance uh five eighty-seven and that amended. The subsection sixteen fifty-two one hundred that uh speaks to and regulates ADUs and JADUs. And as we all know, and I think we just, some of that was discussed previously. Was um, there have been a number of bills introduced, um, and we have responded accordingly each time and amended. Our municipal code. Currently, SB eight ninety-seven has been signed into law, requiring additional amendments to the current accessory dwelling unit regulations that are found within our municipal code. And that is what's before you. Next slide, please. So there there aren't many. There's about five. Um, however, I will state before I get into the specifics of the changes. Um, we did take the liberty of adding some um definitions that we didn't have in before, um, solely so that we could make it clearer for the public. But um. And and most importantly, um, one of the items is height. And um. The height of uh of this detached accessory dwelling unit is sixteen feet. On a lot with a proposed single-family or multifamily dwelling unit. And then this is a little bit different, a height of eighteen feet for a detached accessory dwelling unit. On a lot with an existing or proposed single-family or multifamily dwelling unit. That is within the one half of a one mile walking distance of a major transit stop or high quality transit quarter. That really hasn't changed. That that's what we still do today. We apply that um. Definition of a tra- a high quality uh transit quarter. And that the local agency shall also allow an additional two feet in height. To accommodate a roof pitch on an accessory dwelling unit that is aligned with the roof pitch of the primary dwelling unit. That is, that is new. A height of eighteen feet for a detached accessory dwelling unit on a lot with an existing. Proposed multifamily, multi-story dwelling unit. That's increased by um from sixteen to eighteen. And a height of twenty-five feet or height limitation in the local zoning ordinance. That applies to the primary dwelling unit, whichever is lower, for an accessory dwelling unit that is attached to the primary dwelling unit. And this clause shall not require a local agency to allow an accessory dwelling unit to exceed two stories. We do have something that similar to that now where we look at what happens when someone attaches to the back of um. An existing structure. However, we make sure that they can't go over the the height of the structure or more than the two stories. So there's a limit of thirty feet. Next slide, please. And then I know that, yeah, I think all of you were on council when we discussed the front yard setbacks. So now the town has the authority to impose front yard setbacks on ADUs that are subject to an ADU permit. However. SB eight ninety-seven now requires that the town must yield the front setback. To a to the extent possible to allow for construction of an eight hundred square foot ADU. Provided the applicant can demonstrate that they have a four-foot side and rear setback on their existing structures. That the the current law that yields authority with respect to the FAR lock coverage and open space requirements. Um, the legislature has also now included front setback to this list. So in other words, um, we spent some time talking about averaging uh front yard setbacks and how we would do our front yard setbacks. We now, if you if you are. Going to uh construct an eight hundred square foot. ADU, you can do that within the front yard, provided you have met the four-foot side and rear setback. Next slide, please. And then um. This is about restriction of denials. If the town denies an ADU unit. Um, application, we have to provide a full set of comments listing the specific items that are deficient or defective in the application. And it must be provided to the applicant as well as how these issues can be remedied. Providing a thorough review and comments as well as remedies has been our common practice and we have not denied an ADU to date. So this should not be anything that we have any issues with this. We currently operate in this fashion. Next slide, please. And then allowing new configurations for junior accessory dwelling units. The current legislation requires that JADUs must be constructed within the walls of the proposed or existing single-family dwelling. And Tiburon Planning Staff has interpreted this to include non-livable space within the primary structure. Including garages. We've had JADUs in garages. And then SB eighty-nine eight nine seven clarifies that interpretation that we have been making as correct. And so this change is not substantive as to the practices that we currently make in Tiburon. Um, as we have been considering these configuration in the matter stated in the in in the law. In addition, the law also clarifies that JADU shares a bathroom with a primary residence. The JADU must have an interior entry into the main living area. Independent of any exterior entrances. So that's when you have a JADU that shares it. They they can't go outside and they come in. They have to have an interior access. Um, we currently operate in this fashion um to date. Next slide. So then, as I stated, um, there's a number of definitions that uh. We changed um to provide clarity to the public. But the new legislation provides a more specific definition for us regarding objective standard. Um, and it means standards that involve no personal or subjective judgment by a public official. And are uniformly verifiable by a reference to an external and uniform benchmark or criterion available and knowledgeable by both. The development applicant or proponent and the public official prior to some submittal. Um, and the proposed amendment includes this definition and we've included it in the ordinance. Next slide. So what? The the town, we're asking the town council do or we recommend to the town council is that we hold the public hearing and consider all of the testimony. Make revisions as appropriate and um the mayor did ask me about this. We we don't have a lot of latitude in these changes because it is state law. Um, and we have applied it specifically from that legislation. Um, wave first reading of the ordinance and read by title only and approve the ordinance. And with that, if you have any other questions, I'm available.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the community director, fellow director? Councilmember Thier, any questions?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay, great. Um, so at this point, I'd like to open it up to the public. Is there any members of the public in attendance, Mr. Waterman, who would like to speak on this this item? No, okay. Um, seeing none. Uh, Madam Clerk, is there anybody online who'd like to speak to this item?
Being none.
Thank you. So I'll close the public comment period and bring it back to the council for discussion and potential motion.
Sure, I'd like to start and just say that um. You know, this is really cleanup legislation. Um, and uh. I uh think that we are required to do this, so um at the appropriate time, I'm happy to make a motion.
I'm happy to entertain that motion now if you'd like.
Okay, I would like to move. That we read uh by title only and introduce the ordinance uh waving for for the reading and that we then hold a roll call vote on the introduction.
And do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Um. So would the town clerk like me to read the title now or should we have the roll call vote first? Okay, so I will read the um. Soon as it comes. The. The or uh proposed, the ordinance is an ordinance of the Town. Council of the Town of Tiburon, amending subsection sixteen dash five two point one zero zero of section sixteen dash fifty-two. Of chapter sixteen of title four of the Tiburon Municipal Code. And repealing subsection sixteen dash fifty-two point one oh five. Of section sixteen dash fifty-two of chapter sixteen of title four of the Tiburon Municipal Code regarding accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. Um, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Thier.
Yes.
Councilmember Wellner is absent. Vice Mayor Fredericks.
Yes.
And Mayor Ryan.
Yes, thank you. Um, and at this point, we can move on to public hearing number three. Um, the municipal code, further municipal amendments with respect to the alarm code. Um, do we have a staff report on this one?
I believe the town clerk will be giving this report.
Great, thanks.
Yes, thank you. Um, hello again, Mayor and Councilmembers. This item is the introduction of an ordinance. Um, first reading of an orange, ordinance, I should say, of minor text amendments to the municipal code as it relates to alarm code, alarm permits. Uh, for the police department. In two thousand and four, uh, the town council gave some direction to the police department. To update their alarm code permitting process to issue permits on an annual basis instead of every two years. Um, and it has basically just come to staff's attention recently that this change was never updated in the actual municipal code. And that the text amendment is brought before you tonight. Um, the police department has been following the practice and the direction of the council. Um, in the two thousand and four resolution, which is attached to your staff report. Since that time, this is just cleanup of the, you know, municipal code text. Um, just as you did before, this is an introduction, first reading of the ordinance. So the council should hold a public hearing. And if the council wishes to pass the ordinance on to the next step, I would be. Happy to walk you through the process, even though you just did it. So um, please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Right, Councilmember Thier? Have to, oh, do you?
Oh, go to Councilman, go to Vice Mayor Fredericks if she has a question. I'm still formulating my.
She does not have any questions. You're on the spot.
Actually, I do not have a question. I I found what I was looking for. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Um. At this point, I'd like to open. For public comment. Is there any member of the public online who would like to? Uh, comment on this item?
Being none.
Okay, I will close public comment period. Thank you. Um, and bring it back to the council for discussion.
I would like to move uh that we um. Read by title only and carry the motion and then read the title of the draft ordinance. Um. And um vote uh accordingly. And waive any additional readings.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, um, so this, the title of this ordinance is an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Tiburon, amending title. Six, chapter twenty-nine, Burglar Alarm Systems of the Tiburon Municipal Code. Um, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Thier.
Yes.
Councilmember Wellner is absent. Vice Mayor Fredericks.
Yes.
And Mayor Ryan.
Yes, thank you. The motion passes three zero. Um, so that brings us to the conclusion of the meeting. Are there any uh town manager reports that we need to?
No, Mr. Mayor.
And there are they town council reports?
Nope.
Um, I'd only like to say one quick thing. I did meet with somebody who was advocating that we um, as a council, write a letter of support to Caltrans for their proposed design of. Uh, bike paths on Tiburon Boulevard when they redo that. Um. And I may have directed them to the Legislative Action Committee, which you may hear about, but we don't need to do that. So um, we'll, this is something we can uh discuss at a later meeting. Thank you. Um. With that, we can adjourn the meeting for this evening. Thank you all for attending.
Thank you.